Prayer and.
Praise God. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your many, many blessings. And Lord, I thank you for certain scriptures, Lord, that stands out and and kind of gives us peace of mind. Lord, I thank you for putting that in there. Now, Heavenly Father, I pray that you'll be with our employees, that you'll watch over them. I ask you to be with our first responders and watch over them. Lord, just give us the knowledge and wisdom to make the best decisions for our county. And we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Good evening, Jason. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, if you haven't signed in, there's a sign in sheet over there. Would please? And, uh, remember, Jason and myself is here, Lauren, with a commission, Luke's on Zoom. And so, uh, we'll call this meeting to order.
Do we have people on Zoom stating they're on? Does like they're signing in?
That's a good idea. Uh, what we, we've been getting a lot of people on Zoom. So if you can hear me, uh, would you please, uh, state your name, uh, for us so we can have it on record? We got Luke.
This is Liz Roger, and I can hear you fine so far.
All right. Thank you, Liz.
Hey Roger, this is Rhonda. I can hear you just fine too.
All right, Rhonda, repeat my, thank you, Rhonda.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and the only one other one there is, who's the Zoom user at the bottom? I don't know.
Zoom user?
Who's the Zoom user at the bottom?
I see.
Thank you, Senator Taugh. Well, okay. All right. Thank you, the ones that did. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move along. Uh, Lauren, the agenda?
Um, additions to the agenda, I don't know.
Everything looks good?
Yeah, I think it looks like they had everything.
Okay. Your, uh, motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
And I second that also. Minutes from the previous meetings. Did you get a chance to look over?
I did, except for the latest one that Lauren just, uh, sent us. Give us, yeah, the draft.
And they emailed September twenty-third, which is the last meeting, and September sixth was a special meeting, and then catching up on the backlinks from the new December third, December third, I emailed you, December eighteenth, I just handed to you, but I still have to do Jerry's committee report.
Okay, so we can.
Pending with amendments that I'll email you.
Yeah, so we can approve that pending, right? Okay, I hear a motion to, to, uh, accept the September twenty-third, we got sent to us.
I make a motion that we.
That's that's September twenty-third, and I approve that also. And I make a motion, we accept the October sixth, that was a special meeting we had, like a work session.
I second that.
And also, December the twentieth, twenty twenty-four, uh, we've got two, uh, one of them's the third. One of them's the third, one's the eighteenth, yes. Do I, I'll make a motion, we accept the third.
I, I second that.
And I make a motion, we accept the eighteenth pending, right? I second that pending anything, okay. Good deal. So those have been approved. Okay, public comments. Anybody got any questions and comments? If nothing in, we'll move along. Correspondents, Office of Assessors. The assessor here, we, we have, uh, she seems to be doing pretty good, bringing in a little bit of funds. Uh, so that's good. Okay, then we have the Mineral County Dog Warden. Uh, we had five animal bites, no rabies shots. Uh, four, uh, four humans exposed to, to rabies and one animal, uh, exposed to rabies, but, uh, we haven't got no results on that yet, but we've got seven dogs, fourteen cats to be given away, sold or be given away, was sold or given away. And she has a few more out at the compound if anybody wants one. Okay. Uh, our divisional correction, I see it's climbing a little bit. Regional jail bill was forty-three thousand, seven hundred and one dollar and eighty-four cents. So that it's climbing up on some. I wish the state would make everybody, the rest and agencies pay for their bills. I, I really do. I, I I, I think that needs to be done. But it is what it is. Okay, give me a second to get through. All right. Help, yeah, help district fire department. We had to thing here from them, perform the procedure. They, they're, I'm not going to read all this. Lauren, is this the one where they're talking about where they pay for their audit?
Yes.
And.
They did, they did comply with your request.
Yeah, they did.
It cost them three thousand dollars.
And I knew one of the firemen said something to me the other day about the commission should refund him the three thousand dollars.
That's come about, yes, because they were doing what you asked them to do. So they, they complied with your request.
They did.
I know. I didn't get a copy of like the survey of how many actually did complete the reviews to the point where they've actually paid for them or have been built for them.
I don't know. I'll tell you what, Luke, could you find out how many has paid for their, uh, that audit, second audit thing that they wanted?
Uh, I know that it's definitely two. Fountain has been completed as well, um, but I, I think those were the only two that were completed based on conversations I've had.
But I'd like to hold this off till everybody's here. But we'll discuss this. Okay.
It's just under court.
I'll let, I'll guard you. Yeah, yeah. Uh, Region Eight Solid Waste, uh, there'll be a solid waste meeting Thursday morning at ten o'clock at the Region Eight Office in Peter Fur, planning developments, not having one this month. And it's Tucker County Land Field Foundation, I'm sorry, Tucker County Foundation. Uh, to send a letter of thanks for the donation that we give to them, which we give every year for the run, to support the run. So thank them for that. Good, good group of people. Uh, the commission, we'll see. Old business. Any board appointments?
Not for this one, sir.
Another board appointment.
Oh, here.
I mean. And all I'm like, you can see I'm running.
In the fourth time.
Okay, okay. All right, we'll get down to update on the courthouse. I next. Luke, you have anything here, sir?
Yeah, so I have several things. Um, well, number one, we'll talk about the access control that I talked about at the work session. Um, so to finish the camera system up, because we had issues with our previous vendor, um, they stood me up for another meeting. Um, so I look for that to probably be the trend moving forward. Um, I'm going to try again, but, um, they, they stood me up again. So to finish the camera system with Advantage, it's going to be sixty-four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And then to finish the access control system will be six thousand dollars. Um, I told you all last week or the week before, whenever we had the meeting, um, I thought the prosecutor's office was the only thing that was required, but Tom, do you know the cell door you all ordered for the holding cell, Hotchkiss seems to remember that it's only access control. It doesn't have a key lock. Is that correct?
Uh, it does have a key, but it would be the, uh, sure, like it would be part of the master key. It would be separate problems.
Oh, so it is keyed. It can be locked without access control?
Yeah, that's my understanding. I haven't seen the locks. Uh, I think that's still coming.
Okay. Yeah, we haven't seen the door either. That's, but, so, uh, the prosecutor's office definitely needs to be done, um, but sheriff, the, is he walking out of the room? This is for him. Um, the holding cell area, you talked to Hotchkiss, um, and you guys were under the impression that that door was going to be access control only. Tom just said it does have a key. So what are your thoughts on that area then?
Are there any other access controls that have to be put in besides that one?
Uh, I mean technically, all of those doors, that, the doors that go into that area could all be keyed, um, and not have access control, but that's, that's up to you on how secure you guys feel that is and if you think that's going to be adequate.
Well, I think he will be fine.
So you don't think that area needs access control?
I believe that Frank's been prepped for a strike, electric strike, so down the road, if you wanted to add to the system, I think it'd be prep court.
Okay. Well, I, I mean commissioners, I realize that it's not nothing, but in the grand scheme, it's, it's three thousand dollars. Um, and truly, I've said it before, but I should mean it this time. That should be the last of security and access control unless someone comes up with something else they absolutely need. Um, so I mean, the sheriff's saying they can live without, um, but that's, that's your all's call.
So we want to do that? Yeah, you're, what?
What other doors besides the cell door?
The cell door and then both doors that enter the holding area.
I think he acts as moving time.
Yeah, that's, that's your all's call. That's why I wanted, uh, but I do need to know today.
Like you said, if we choose to go with, uh, the EPOP access later down the road, we can do that.
Lauren, he's already pulling cables in there for cameras. I can have him go ahead and pull the cables in for the door. Um, I'm sure that would cost basically nothing, and then if you all decide you want to spend the money on the hardware in the future, we can, but that's up to you all.
Think that'd be a good idea.
Speak, speaking of security, I agree with that, but also on another note, um, does Advantage have the software for us to download and review video footage from the camera systems now? Is that as it is right now? We can download it, but it can't be viewed. And this is due to a recent investigation that has occurred there in the building. Uh, the hard drives had to be pulled. The information was downloaded, but it takes a certain software to be able to view it. And that software, the software's nine hundred dollars.
We'd have to ask, because I've downloaded video off the surveillance system before, like in nine-one-one, we have the same one, and, um, I've not had a problem.
Well, that's, that's access through the computer to view it, correct?
Right, but I've also saved and downloaded the.
This, this is coming directly off of the hard drive. It had been pulled from the.
Oh, um, I don't know. We can ask. Hotchkiss has Frank's number. Why don't you just have him call? Cause you guys would know more about that to call them directly.
Okay.
Yeah, so I did, uh, Hotchkiss has Frank's number so they can interface directly on camera locations and all that kind of stuff. And I told Frank that after I was out of the administrator position, I figured, um, uh, Hotchkiss would be dealing with him more anyways, so.
The deal.
Okay. Um, okay, so just the third floor and finish the camera system then, and do not do the holding areas. Is that correct, commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we at least pull the cable for the doors, future access, and then we'll do the others. The cheaper route, you know, as far as, um, in and out.
Okay.
Yeah, I second that. And Luke, if you, if you can get just a price on how much it's going to cost us to run that cable. I know it's, it's going to be way less, but just so we have it in our big ears.
Yeah, I'll ask him. I don't look for it to be more than like, like two or three hundred bucks, just the actual cost of the cable. Um, cost to pull access cable, third floor, holding cell. Okay, um, and then I also have a pencil copy of a pay app. Um, this should be the final pay app. Is that correct, Tom?
There, there would still be the remaining remaining, but this is the second to last. This would be to get us to closing.
I'm sorry, Liz, can we back up? But you initially talked about Advantage finishing for the six thousand four hundred and eighty-nine, but Jason, that wasn't part of your motion, was it?
No, I didn't hear that figure.
Okay, so do we need to move forward with that?
Yes, and a portion of that will come from the grant, and I'm hoping to get a little bit of money back from P three, um, but that's the camera system.
That's for Advantage to finish the camera system, right?
That's correct.
Six thousand one.
And that was six thousand four hundred and eighty-nine?
Right.
Was that, you guys want to address that or?
And a part of it's coming from the grant and the rest comes from the general?
Yes, and I'm hoping that I can get some money back from P three, but like I said, I've already been stood up twice, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold my breath.
I'm hoping this is it. Um, so I make a motion that we, um, finish off the camera project, six thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. I second.
Well, now with that being said, though, um, we have not paid P three for monitoring. I have a couple thousand dollars worth of bills in my folder that we've not paid for P three. Um, so if they don't soon start talking to me, we just simply won't pay those bills and we'll be even. Um, cause I've already switched our alarm monitoring to another company, um, that Frank recommended, so they finished that up last week. Um, it's actually a little cheaper than P three, so. But the sheriff didn't pay his monitoring bill, and they haven't been paid for some of the other buildings either, and we're on a new company, so we've got that, and there was a couple other things, so I'm hoping he will talk to me at some point.
Okay, and what about the prosecuting attorney, uh?
That was about three thousand of that six thousand.
Oh, that's part of the six thousand.
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. And that covers the cameras in the lobby and the stairwell.
Yeah, that gets all the cameras Hotchkiss felt like we needed.
Okay.
Hotchkiss, I walked around with Frank, um, last week or the week before, uh, sometime, it all runs together. Um, any more questions on that?
No, I just following up from where you started. We didn't make those motions, so.
Um, so then pay application, like Tom said, this will be the last of the USDA funds, and then the rest will be, um, what we already have in the account for General County. Now, with that being said, we will have, um, a four thousand dollar bill coming from Royal Air for service to all of our HVAC systems in the courthouse. We do that every year, um, except Fair Chance told me this year they would pay that bill. Um, so we're going to pay it, and then they're just going to credit it on the last pay application. So, cause they, um, did not shut off our HVAC systems like they were supposed to and close everything down, so they were all full of construction debris. So Royal Air came and cleaned all that out, so we will have a four thousand dollar bill, but that's going to be credited off the pay application, which three thousand of that's a cost we usually incur anyways, so that, um, that worked out well for us. Uh, the pay application is for four hundred and eighty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. Now typically, the building commission approves this before you all do, um, but the building commission doesn't meet until Thursday. So this is pay application number thirty-one. We need approval on it, and then they'll approve it at their meeting.
Repeat that figure, would you please?
Four eighty-four, six fifty-one, ninety-eight.
Thank you, Liz. I make a motion, we, uh, approve the pay application thirty-one for four hundred and eighty-four dollars, six hundred and one dollars and I second.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you, no, you.
Liz, you want to mention the title insurance that you mentioned at the special meeting?
Oh, yeah, I mentioned that at the special meeting, um, the John Athies, well, I guess it's not John Athie anymore. He doesn't sell title insurance. Bev is working for, uh, all Millicent Frazier, yeah, and have to buy title insurance for the project, and it's going to be about fourteen thousand dollars. It's twelve thousand five hundred for the title insurance and then about fifteen hundred for the real estate work. I was under the impression that when we paid all this the first time, that it was paid. Um, however, learned that gotta buy it twice, so.
We need to approve that also.
I don't have the invoice yet, though, so though, I mean, it's like, we can't pay it today. I just figured we would come to a meeting once it came. I mean, you guys can approve it today, but we'll have an exact number and stuff with an invoice later.
I'd like to hold off.
And then the only other thing that was discussed on, uh, at the special meeting was, uh, the assessor had asked for a door for her storage room. I didn't have anything that followed up on that.
The commission didn't instruct me to do anything with that. I mean, that's up to them.
I don't, I don't remember that part.
Yeah, she's like, all that stuff was piled up in her room, and she requested that a door be placed there because one's probation's in there, people are going to be going out. She just, all of her.
All of her stuff.
And it needs to be.
Yeah, it needs to be there, so, yeah. I guess, uh, do we have a price on it?
We don't have, Luke, could you get a price on that, please?
It's, maintenance can put one in, most likely. They're around three hundred bucks for a steel pre-hung door.
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we, this is in the old courthouse, putting up, uh, a door in Jill's old office for the files, so I make a motion that we go ahead and have a door installed by maintenance.
And I'll second that.
Yeah, I'll put in a work order.
Thank you.
All right, you got anything else, Liz?
Uh, not on that topic, I don't.
Okay. What else you got on? How much more money you got to spend?
Not much more today. I think I only have one quote in here for all. This is for a door at Family Court that we talked about a while back, and I said I'd get pricing on. Actually, I think you all told me to go ahead and do it. It's three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars for a door at Family Court. Did you all still want me to go ahead and continue with that?
That you gotta have it?
Yeah, cause we fixed the closer once. We had Cumberland Glass come fix the closer, and it's already stopped working.
What's, what was the figures on that again, please?
Three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
But we made a motion to go in and put that on there before, or?
I do think you did. I didn't have a price for it before. We just got the pricing, but yeah, I do think you all made a motion to go forward with that.
All right.
And then actually, while we're talking about it, um, that we talked about at the last meeting, but it wasn't on the agenda. Did you guys want me to move forward with the panic bar for the exit from magistrate lobby? That was like, it was around nine hundred dollars. I don't have that price in this folder.
Seven hundred and forty-three.
Seven hundred and forty-three, okay.
For the panic alarm bar?
Yeah.
I, I make a motion that we, uh, go ahead and have the panic bar alarm put in, seven hundred and forty-three dollars.
And I'll second that. Are you sure you're done spending the money? You should cut it off.
No, you realize none of these things benefit my office or me. These are all general facilities things.
What else you got?
That should be all I have until we get down to, um, new business under animal control, community corrections, and then the AC for magistrate court.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Luke. Yeah, thanks. Uh, update on the CDBG health department facility. Did you get, uh, did you get the pictures on?
I called AJ. AJ was sending them to Luke.
Luke, did you get the pictures?
Yeah, I have them. Give me a second. I'll send them to my computer, and then I'll pop them up on the Zoom in one second.
Good deal. Thank you. I'm going to move on a little bit until you get there, okay?
At the last meeting, you approved a pay app for two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. I got a check last week for two hundred and twenty-seven. I couldn't remember what it was for, and asked Luke. And then I'm doing the minutes. I'm like, wow, that's the quickest turnaround we received one of those checks. So we already received that check.
Okay, uh, Dutch is not here for the update on the opioid funding, but we, he does want, uh, he was talking about that. What was?
He wants, um, back in December seventeen, uh, they approved opioid funding for creative living, um, for twenty thousand. They got, they received their one payment of ten, and he wanted to make a motion that we release the other ten thousand to them. Do you want to make a, and I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that, so we can get to pay out. Update on the chase car.
This was a report from the meeting. I don't know if you have one without an envelope, wanted that you can.
I just, um, I just texted them and asked them if they can send us the, well, without the envelope, they'll do that.
Yeah, they had them down there the other night. You, you can't read nothing.
Yeah. Uh, so I just hold off on, um, this until we get to do it.
Back to that. Okay, thank you.
You can't read the numbers.
Are you all able to see those pictures?
Yes, sir, we can. Um, I wasn't looking up. That's the upgrade of the new building out, uh, health department. And let me get in here and get the messages he sent me. To that. Oh, I didn't, it's on, uh, AJ also sent me a message, cause I talked to him this morning. He said it's on schedule for sometime in March. No additional, uh, overreach at this time. So the way it looks in March, if the weather permits and everything holds out, it'll be complete. So, uh, when I look, when you, if you get a chance right after you look at it, it's a pretty building. I thought it would be bigger than what it is. I really did. But it, it looks, it looks pretty nice. It'll be nice.
Definitely well-built. That's a lot of steel.
Oh, yeah, it's well-built and, uh, that's county, the citizens of Mineral County didn't pay nothing for that. That's through, uh, grants and stuff. That all come free, free gratis to us. Like, come out your state taxes you pay, maybe some of it out of your federal taxes, but uh, it's all been grants for the area itself, so that's great. Thank you, Liz. Okay. Update on the, uh, chase car, September one. Is that what you got here?
So we're going to hold off until I get the new report.
Till you get, oh, okay, that's right. Got too much going on in my head, so.
It's okay.
Sorry too much.
I would like to, I know Dutch is here to hold off on discussing fees and ambulance authority.
Yeah, cause we talked about some ways we could help with the ambulance authority money, so. Cause they're, they're starting to hurt because the new ambulance now unfitted is about a half a million dollars. And that, that squads is getting old. Something that matters. What's the oldest one? Twenty-one, twenty-one years old, the oldest one. And so we'd like to get a little bit of money out of the sheriff's, uh, his budget. No, not his budget, his, so. What they call that fund? Help me out.
Concealed one.
Concealed weapons fund, thank you. Concealed weapon. Get some money out of that, we might be able to buy a new ambulance authority. He's not smiling. Scary. All right, we'll move on down to new business. Pro purchase of Tahoe out of the Coast Shepherd's Fund. Joel?
By understanding that's what the Coast Shepherd's Fund.
By understanding that's what the coal severance fund was used for, but you're telling me that there's no money in there now to purchase it out of there?
Well, in the years as the carryover has built up and then a lot of the outside agencies are coming out of the fold with, uh, and we have, I think, seventy-one thousand five hundred and outside agencies coming out of coal now. Which, so it's kind of giving you a heads up before this meeting. It looks like they might have about twenty to thirty thousand that we can put against Tahoe out of coal and still have enough to do the quarterly contributions out of this year's budget. And that's something we need to look at when we do this year's budget, is maybe not having those outside agencies.
Coming out cold.
So much of it.
Because we've always, if I remember right, we've always bought a cruiser out of.
When we get enough money in coal, yeah, yeah.
We, we try to buy one out of it.
How much is, sorry, how much is in there now that you just said?
Seventy-one.
No, that's seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy.
I- is this to pay for the Tahoe that's coming or, oh, okay. The Tahoe that ordered last year.
It'll be here this week.
Okay.
So as I mentioned to him too, we could do twenty, thirty thousand now, and if there's any money left over at the end of the year, possibly put that back into another line.
Well, we're gonna have to come up with money someplace, please.
But we can't cut it short for the outside agencies that are already budgeted.
Right, right. Right.
Uh, I thought when we purchased the Silverados, we confirmed that that Tahoe was coming out of coal and there was adequate funds in there before we bought those Silverados, because that was one of the things was there was supposed to be adequate money in the budgets to pay for those.
Because that's the one, I'm the one that mentioned it. And because they're looking at the carryover from last year, but then when we actually did the budget last year, then we had more coming out for outside agencies.
Okay.
Outside agencies go up that much?
A couple of them. We're, actually, I said seventy-one five, but it's actually seventy-four thousand that's budgeted out of coal for contribution. We have Manko, the Piedmont Library Development Center, Sarah's House, Family Crisis Center, Resource Network, Agent of Family Services, Tomic Valley Transit, um, the Historical, uh, Landmarks Commission, the Community, um, Pugger Community Foundation and.
Landmark Commission, is that the twenty thousand dollars that been there?
No, that's one thousand.
What's the twenty thousand?
That is the, uh, Tomic Valley Conservation District for the flood control.
So then currently, how much do we have and put towards the Tahoe? Probably.
We provide the principal with thirty. If we're comfortable with twenty, I think thirty's stretching it, but we can do thirty probably.
And how much was the Tahoe?
Fifty-six, five, twenty-nine, twelve.
And now it's our job to figure out where to come up with the rest.
If we get good revenue, we might actually we have to revisit that, look at the budget next year. That more including outside contributions will have to come out of General County again. They can have one pot or the other.
So just take it out of one of the pots. We can take it out of that.
The twenty-six thousand five twenty-nine is what we need then. Oh, I don't, honestly, I don't know. I, I don't know which.
Well, we don't have a choice.
I know, but Laura and Wes want the new credit reset.
I was going to General County.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I know, we're just.
Yeah, we should twenty-five, twenty-five. Um, well, I'll tell you, twenty-six thousand five twenty-nine. Can I make a, I'd like to make a motion that we work to thirty thousand, just in case the coal severance is not what it should be.
So take thirty thousand out of coal?
No, take, take it out of. If we have to, we can take thirty thousand out of general fund.
Out of General County?
Just in case it's not in, just in case there's not enough in coal, because it's not being paid for.
So only take the twenty-six, five, twenty-nine, twelve out of coal?
Take, take all we get out of coal, but then up to thirty thousand out of county budget. You said you didn't know that it's thirty thousand. You, how cold.
Well, I mean, I don't know what the.
That's what I'm saying.
It's gonna be between now and June thirtieth.
Yeah, yeah.
See, because we're basing it on what we need and what we may get or what we should get. So, and I don't think the tax distribution was centered in that.
Okay, so we already be good there.
I think so.
So then that, just for my mind, that's been a basic revision that we.
I had to add more than I need.
I, I second that. In that a way, it's starting to, it's coal severance, we, we have a little bit extra there.
Yeah.
So we can readdress it.
Once the tax distribution is done for September, I don't know what month we're in, September, um, then I can figure out what we actually have and then we'll adjust all that to out of coal. And the rest out of General County, no more than thirty.
So, yeah, did, how much will that, um, affect us in coal for next year towards the donations, towards all those other organs?
Just the carryover will not be as much.
Okay.
So we'll have to cut those contributions. We'll probably cut those contributions, another fifteen out of General County as opposed to coming out of coal.
Okay. Alright, so we're good there. Lease agreement for this sheriff satellite office. Alright. Yeah, I'll hold it. What are you doing? I'm thinking, I'm getting.
Does anybody have any questions regarding to the placement of that office?
Now, the lease includes water and trash.
Is it anything else?
Internet and electric.
Utilities, sending responsible payment of control. We have to pay, uh, uh, the tenant is responsible for payment of following utilities, electric and other services for the payment system. With the exception of water, sewage, trace will be paid for by the landlord. So we, water, sewage, trace, the landlord will pick up the rest of it. Electric and other services will be, uh, for the lease, we have to pay. Is that the way you get it? That's what it says there, sir.
And how long is that lease for? Because our leases have to be year to year and have a termination clause.
Just one year.
Yeah.
Next page.
Or is it only on the next page?
Does this have to be signed today? Um, in order to take possession of, on the fifteenth of this? But I'm sure he wouldn't learn. He needed a few days to.
Luke, have you read over this?
No, I've not seen it.
I'd like for Luke to read over it. I really worry.
Good, you said it. In coal or company that this agreement is there.
Actually, just have her scan it to me.
Just walk down.
Hey, say, hey.
Yeah.
Can you do us a favor? Can you scan that, please?
Yes.
You don't, thank you. Okay, Luke, you'll get it there. And then when you get it, read over, get back with us. We'll, we'll come back to that, okay?
Yeah, I can read that today for sure. Um, do you all want me to see about adding the contents to our insurance?
It probably wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In case somebody falls or something there too, all, the whole facility does.
Yeah.
I will add that once our insurance. Do you all want to approve that? Just tentative of me making sure there's no issues in it, or do you want to wait to the next meeting? Because the next meeting's a while off.
We probably need to approve it. Today. I'm just trying to think how it works is. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll approve it depending upon, uh, your findings, okay?
Okay.
Does that be alright?
Yeah, that's fine. And I'll definitely have an answer to Joel by tomorrow.
Okay, in the morning. Okay, good deal. Is that okay with you, Joel?
Yes, sir. So we need to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Um, make a motion that we approve the lease agreement for the satellite office. Uh, pending on, uh, everything is good with Luke.
And I second.
Okay, and then what about adding the contents and the, and building to the insurance?
I make a motion that we make sure we add the, uh,
Building.
Building contents to the insurance and also make sure the liability insurance is covered on that facility.
Yeah, I'll get that added. I don't know, like, they don't usually quote us stuff for this kind of thing. They usually just add it to the policy and then bill us next year. But I'll check with him and make sure it's not like anything out of this world, but typically, um, typically our cost increases aren't that much because of the size of our policy, but I will definitely look into that this week for sure.
Alright, thanks, Luke. Is that, is that all you need?
For the building.
Again, that, that just, I'll ask again, have anybody had any, any questions or concerns regarding the location of that office?
Uh, thank you for asking. I mean, you, you did, uh, so you, uh, shared with us everything that you're going to be doing and assigning each and all the other stuff, so you pretty much answered our question, I think, in the past meetings.
I know the public asked questions and I've answered quite a few over the past two weeks on it. I didn't know if there was any more.
What were some of the public questions?
The reason for the location. Somebody? Nothing we can get out there and get put on Facebook?
Yo, yes you did. Yes, you did. You know that, my wife's seen it. Did you see it?
Well, the reason for that, the reason for that location was because of call statistics. If you want call statistics, I'd be more happy to give it to you.
Well, th- this is a benefit for the people in the North End of County.
I would agree that. It's a benefit to the department.
Yeah, yeah.
Because at any, at any given time when a call comes out, thirty years, thirty minutes.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm thinking of the citizens too, because it'll, it'll help them with their.
That as well. I mean, the, the concerns, I guess, from, uh, a hand view of the public, the guy that's in place and people. People came to us, they asked for additional, uh, manpower up there. We, we provided that. They were happy. And we're continuing to do that, but Piedmont is on a slow day, ten minutes away.
Yeah.
Okay, Burlington, again, if you need to get to a call in Burlington, you're there within ten to twelve minutes. Even rushing a call from here to the North End, you're looking at twenty to thirty.
I agree.
Um, Burlington had three hundred and eighty-three calls and from September twenty-four to September this year. Elgar had a hundred and thirty-four. The North End of this county had two thousand three hundred and fifty, not from Ford Ashby to Wiley Ford's car, I know. So if you're wanting to apply cost of duty to that, I think we've more than shown that there is a need for in the future, a possible satellite office where you can have at that duty stations or is, is to overdue. So not just for the convenience, but yes, for the calls for service, it's more than that, I believe.
Well, we've been doing it for a year, so we'll see how it works out.
Right, sounds like a good idea, sir.
I think it's a good idea.
And I, I did reach out to the other administrators in the state, just curious if any other sheriff's offices do this. And there are actually a handful of counties that have satellite offices. Now, some have had terrible experiences and closed them down, but the majority have had satellite offices for years and years and years. Um, it's extremely common to have a satellite office for law enforcement, and then it was much more common than I expected to have a satellite tax office. So this isn't something that's like crazy, extreme out there that no one else is doing and doesn't work. I did speak to several administrators and there are other places that are doing it and it's worked well for them and gets, they get a ton of traffic.
Hey, thank you, sir. Alright, um, deputy's position.
Apparently, right now, I believe we have one, uh, based on the slots and manpower that we have is available. We do have seven applications that were submitted and we're reviewing and scheduling to test on the twenty-fifth. However, there are spots that haven't been backfilled in the department budget. So I think what we need to consider is again, being able to control the overtime, which I think we're in pretty good shape so far this year. Do we add one or possibly do more positions to that?
Well, you've got two positions that's not filled, correct?
Currently within the ranks, yes, but we have one slot available by the number that we are allocated for the department.
So we need to hire one more?
We need to hire two, three more.
Oh, do you, are you that many short?
At least two.
I seen one of the guys that put an application in the other day. I didn't talk to him, but I'm seeing, I think he would be, I think he's going to be good.
After reviewing what we have, there's, we, there's.
There's a couple pretty good ones.
Potential in there.
Yes, they are.
And like I say, as far as the overtime, we, we've done fairly well with it so far.
So right now you have fifteen, fif- fifteen officers?
Now, including S R Os, yeah.
Okay.
But, I mean, the budget right now, it reflects that we've used seventy percent of the overtime, which is, which is not accurate. Uh, there is a line item for the holiday payments number.
Oh, they're not, yeah. What we have to do is we have to pull all the time sheet into a spreadsheet and then yarn went through it all.
As well as we.
That's separated by that.
Events. Apple harvest will come out of that event line, which doesn't affect the overtime as well, so. But as far as the manpower.
How many officers do we have then? Not counting, um, you.
Thirteen, not counting us already.
Okay.
So, so just so I'm clear, we have, we are only one officer short for budgeted positions, correct? And then you're saying we're too short for, if we count the people who ranked up, but we're one short on budgeted positions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
What are we making a decision on here? Just giving us enough.
I'm just presenting the information to you. This is something we're gonna have to revisit.
Okay.
But on the twenty-fifth is when we start testing for the application we're currently at. What I'd like to do is revisit this once we start our testing to see the potential, what we could possibly get from this test.
How many, do you have testing on just the one?
That, that's seven.
Yeah, what you reading? Okay. Luke, do you have anything on setting the date of the sale for county surplus properties?
Yeah, everyone wants to get rid of all the crap we save from the, the project. So I just need you all to approve a date. Um, I don't personally care when it is. Um, I think a Friday would probably be best. Um, just because for people to come and that kind of thing. We typically just run it a whole day. Um, I'm thinking like.
Did probation get moved yet?
Probation has not moved, but they have gone through and claimed what they wanted. Um, probation, we're just waiting at this point for the doors to get in because they've waited so long, we might as well just wait for the project to be, their spaces to be completely done before we move them.
And when are doors coming?
Uh, they're supposed to be here this week. Tom, have you heard any updates on that?
I have not.
Okay, yeah, they're supposed to be here this week. So I'm thinking probably like November seventh for the surplus sale. Would that be okay with you all?
Yes, sir. Now, did you talk to Tara? Does she need anything? Does she know it's up there?
Tara's got nicer furniture than the rest of us.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure she might need it.
No, Tara, I don't, I mean, I can ask her, but Tara, um, has been fortunate over the years to have been able to buy new stuff.
But everybody's been asked, right? All the offices.
To the best of my knowledge, everyone has been pushed to that pile, including outside agencies. Um, I can't imagine there's anyone else that would want anything that we haven't offered it to.
Okay.
Where is the sale taking place?
Um, I guess we're going to have to do it at the courthouse, just right there in that back parking lot, because I don't know where else we would do it and just hope there's no rain.
What was the date again? Seventh?
Can we do the seventh if there's rain on the fourteenth?
Well, the seventh is what I wanted to do anyways.
The seventh, unless there's rain, we do it on the fourteenth.
You, you said it backwards.
Yeah, you said it backwards.
If there's rain, if there's rain on the seventh, we can do it the fourteenth. Is that suitable?
Uh, that's fine. I'll be in Louisville on the fourteenth, but, um, the guys and Cody and Eileen and Cassandra are more than capable of running that. That won't be a problem.
All right.
And real quick, are you all okay with us just deciding what the prices are going to be on stuff?
Yes, yeah, you look it up. Now, what time is that going to start?
Um, we'll probably start it at eight AM.
Eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and then when will the, uh, containers when moved?
After the rain.
How soon after the sale?
Um, well, y'all are going to have to pay someone to move them, but I, it just depends on where they're going. Uh, I, I mean, I can have someone come get them the very next week.
I can take care of it.
Sheriff wants them both.
Yeah. He said he could take care of that.
Okay.
Luke, let's start that auction at nine. That'll give the, the ladies time to get in here, get everything, give them a little bit of time to get started. Can we start it at nine?
Yes, and now it won't be an auction. It's going to be a yard sale.
Yeah, no, like a yard sale, but.
Yes. Yep, we can do nine. That's fine.
Got to give them time to get prepared and I think so, instead of running them down here early.
And then anything that doesn't sell goes to the scrapyard?
No.
Scrapyard slash dump, I hope.
I thought we was going to give it to Sheriff's Department.
I'll take every bit of it.
He'll turn it, he'll turn it into cash.
I'll bring them to, I'll get a commission meeting for getting it all the way.
We'll all, we'll put that into a formal motion to have the sale November seventh, nine AM. Um, all pricing can be done at the staff's discretion and whatever doesn't sell, um, gets taken away in the most efficient manner.
I make that motion.
I second that. And the rain date, November the fourteenth, okay?
Okay.
All right, good deal. All right, uh, discuss approval. Uh, or proposed twenty twenty-six budget for community corrections. Oh, I have that here.
I gave that to you all at the last meeting. Uh, Tara wanted me to work on her budget with her before I left, because her and I have done it together for a couple of years. Um. So her budget is running tight again, um, but we were able to make it work. Uh, based on her and I's conversation, she's not running into any more problems. With running out of funds in the community corrections account. So, um. That's why this, this budget, they've been doing a lot more drug testing. Um, you'll notice in their revenues that there's a note. Uh, their blood test rate increased, so we increased that number, but we were able to balance the budget. Um. So if you all want to look at that and approve it, I mean, that's. A budget, be as good as your willingness to follow it.
And if you can email that to me so I can enter it in once they approve it.
Yeah, for sure.
Well.
Because I won't need it. Uh. The amount of her budget is seven hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars, ninety six cents, and that is also her revenue, total. Uh, estimated revenue. So the, of course, that could grow, uh, due to some things, so. Her revenue is what I'm referring to.
Yeah. Well, and real quick, for anyone that's wondering. Only, hmm. Eighty-two thousand dollars of Tara's budget comes from General County. She gets a hundred and ninety thousand from the state community corrections grant. She bills DHHR around four hundred and seventy-four thousand a year. The commission contributes that eighty-two thousand I just mentioned. Uh, she runs grant and mineral community corrections. So grant contributed, contributes forty thousand and then she usually collects about four thousand dollars in client fees. So only a very small portion of her budget actually comes from the county commission.
Yep.
You say seven nine zero seven thirteen.
Here, you can have mine right here.
Thanks.
Excuse me. I make a motion that we approve the corrections, um, community correction budget.
And I second that. Okay. Uh. Got here to review the application for part-time position of animal control. Do you have that, Luke?
Um, I thought Cassandra was going to bring it up. There's actually only one. Um, so. And, uh, the girl who applied is currently a vet tech. I mean, she does seem like she'd probably be a good candidate. I guess the question is, do you want us to coordinate an interview with you all and Missy?
That, that's what I was going to ask. We need to get Missy on board here for that. Is she around? Wonder if she's around today.
Can you add it to the, um, interviews for the fifteen? Just settle them. Tomorrow for tomorrow, yeah, for tomorrow.
Um, I can check with Cassandra and see if this girl and Missy can be there tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I will get her a call. Okay. So we'll hopefully she'll be here tomorrow. Uh.
If not, then we need to be the next commission.
Yeah, we'll have to, we need to, I'll get with Missy and, and maybe we can get something set up. Uh, where she can.
I'm going to have Cassandra coordinate that, so I can either be for tomorrow or try to get her before the next commission meeting.
Tomorrow would be good.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
All right, thank you. I'll make, approve or discuss, approve the AC and heat unit replacement for magistrate court.
Yeah, again, I want to remind you all that I have to come with all this stuff, but I can't help that our facilities, um, are very, very old and stuff falls apart. Um, magistrate court has a very, very old AC unit. It has completely stopped functioning. You can't get free on for it anymore, so therefore you can't even repair it. I got two quotes from Royal Air. Um, they usually quote us the very high-end systems, like the train stuff. Um. But recently I found out they offer another option that's much more comparable to what the other guys are putting in. So a train system would be thirteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. Where they can put in a Healy system, which I think is made by Carrier. And it is nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Um, like I said, the unit has completely quit working. And they did repair it, but it stopped working just a couple of days later, and there's not much more we can do because you can't get the free on for it anymore. So. I don't know what you all want to do with that.
It's got to be fixed.
Yeah, and unfortunately it has to be replaced.
Well, that's what I mean. It's got to, it's got to be fixed, yeah. And when can they start?
And do we have to get other bids from other people?
Well, it's less than fifteen thousand, so we technically don't. I can, but I'm going to be honest, my biggest thing with it is, I know Royal Air is a little more expensive, but when I call them. They come and they do the install and we're done. We're in and out within a couple of weeks. Um. I've waited over six months for some of these other guys to get this done, and that's phone call after phone call after phone call to get it scheduled. I'll do whatever you all want me to do. Um, but I feel like that Healy system is a very reasonable price. Tom's in the room and I realize this has nothing to do with him. Um, but do you have any experience with those Healy systems?
Uh, not enough to make a recommendation on that.
Okay. Are they made by Carrier, Tom? I feel like that's what they told me and I can't remember.
That sounds right. I, again, I don't, I don't get any of that. Say it, say it out.
Okay. I guess, um. It's got to be done. I just, hey, I've got it's being brought up for the first time. It's, I think about it, but I mean.
Well, it's got to be done, because, yeah.
I mean, you all can think about it. It just happened though, last week. Um, so I got the pricing and put it on the agenda.
We got another two weeks.
Yeah, you're going to be up in November. What about their heat? That's what I'm concerned about. I don't want them to be cold.
Yeah, and these are definitely, it's a gas furnace and two and a half ton AC.
I make a motion that we approve the Healy system for nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars to the magistrate court.
And I second it too. Because they got to have it. They got to have it. All right. Uh, Luke, we got a, we got a, uh. A thing down here for a special meeting on November the fourth, at one thirty for the closing. Is that? I was told the other day that might not be a go. What's the story on that?
Um, well, contact your senators and, uh, House of Representatives, because that's what's going to be holding it up. Uh, the federal government has to be open for that to happen. Um. But I, I don't want to say it's canceled yet, because I, as long as they open up probably about a week before that. We'll be good. Everyone else. All of the work that's being done is mostly by non-federal employees. It's by bond council and stuff, but. The USDA is certainly going to need at least a week to be open, so. Let's give it another week or two and then we'll make a decision from there, but at this point, I can't even contact USDA. They're not allowed to work. Um, so like I can't send them an email and ask them what they think I should do. So let's give it another week and. See what they want to do. Tom, do you agree with that? Or do you think we should go ahead and reach out to bond council and move it?
Um, maybe get their advice on. What the timing is, if they've done this the past USDA. Um, what's the, they say it's a drop dead date to, to reschedule. I'm not confident the USDA can turn it when we get, they're coming back from. Multiple week shutdown, so.
Okay, I'll reach out to bond council then and just see what they want to do, but I certainly don't have an answer to that today. And if they do want to move it, I'll reach out to y'all and we'll get it moved.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to bring that up. All right, that concludes.
If he has anything for his report.
Oh, that's what I'm going to do. That concludes all variety of the business. What's, what's these two?
Um, that was with the ambulance authority, the, or the invoices that I drew up for August and September, and I gave them to Colby at the meeting. I just did that for your FYI.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we don't have any other, uh. Oh, I do. Just real quick on chase vehicle. Um, sorry to go back to that. Um. The hospital is, uh, donating, uh, money for the blood. Machines that we need, fifteen thousand. Um. So their chase, the ambulance store is going to purchase it. Then the hospital is going to, uh, donate the money back to them, but I need a W nine for them. Is that, is that something that you can just email to Lauren or?
Oh, you need a W nine for ambulance authority? Are they paying back to ambulance authority?
I think it's ambulance.
Then you need W nine for.
Colby told me this morning that Short Gap's paying for it. They're reimbursing through us, Short Gap.
Through Short Gap, okay.
Through us, through the ambulance authorities. So I guess WBU is sending a check to the ambulance authority. The ambulance authority is going to pay Short Gap, because P卡aren't up and running yet.
So could you get them the W nine? Thank you.
Because, do you have, who, who's any?
Um, Lauren.
That's our disaster before.
See, that was my only thing before you.
So it, on that one, that is, okay, I'd take care. So the administrator's report.
Um, I don't have anything for that today and I'm actually going to, um, jump off here, so. I just wanted to get through this business, but yeah, I don't have anything for the report today. I think we've went over plenty in business.
Okay.
Just make sure you click the stop recording when you close, please, and then I'll upload it to YouTube tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, Jason, you got anything to report?
I do. Um. Hold on. Uh, so since the last meeting, um, that would next error on just with the proposed, um, lines that they're going to be running through, uh, the county. Um, they wanted to meet with us before they publicly announced it. Um. Then went to the ribbon cutting, uh, at Northford Grumman. On September twenty-fifth. The next error was September twenty-fourth, Lauren. Um. On the September thirtieth, went over and helped at Apple Harvest, cutting apples. Uh, October first, uh, went to the courthouse for the breast cancer awareness. Part of that. Um. Then we had a working commission planning meeting on October sixth. And then, um, October seventh, uh, we had a board meeting with development authority. Update, they gave us an update on the project, uh, at Northford Grumman. And, um, how, how they were involved with all that and helping get that set up. Um. Let's see. And then yesterday, um. Had a meeting with Mark Buco from the hospital, and that's when we discussed, um, the chase cars going to be running blood and coordinating with the hospital. Um, and, um, worked out all the details on that, on what it's going to take to check out blood and put blood back into County Valley Hospital. And the machines and stuff that it costs for that was a part of that discussion.
That it?
Yep.
All right, I also met with next there, uh, and along with Rick, Rick was there. We all sat down with, uh. Caitlin, did she ever get her card back?
It handed it to her.
Good, great, good to hear that. And, uh, I had a health department production update meeting. I was on Zoom for that. I, I went to region eight. Planning and development. I had a Parks Rec meeting. I had a Camp Bingo meeting. I had a Gideon's dinner that I had to go to. Uh, I was at region eight on the second of this month. Uh. I had a work session on the sixth. Uh, I worked the Apple Harvest for the sheriff's department. And, and I didn't get paid for the, for, uh, selling the medallions that they sold.
Checks in the mail, sir.
Checks in the mail, great. And, uh. I had an ambulance authority meeting and I was at the firefighting firefighters meeting, but I showed up a little, I was about fifteen minutes late getting there. I had. Other irons in the fire. So I've had a busy two weeks.
Also, I went to October first, went to Piedmont, uh, city council meeting and then, uh, Dupree. Fire department. One to six and one to seven.
So, does anybody have any questions or anything? This was a short meeting. Of course, we're not done yet, but.
Thanks for having me.
Uh-huh, I love them.
I do have questions.
Yes, sir.
Where are you at with providing those copies of the budget provisions that I asked?
Soon as I get my financial done, that's priority first.
We don't have any basically, but. No.
No more.
No, ma'am. I asked you to personalize.
Okay, again, such a lot of, so, like I said, I got to get, uh. I did the other budget provision that was approved at the September ninth meeting, got it processed last night. To run these financial reports here, I have to do my financial year end, and that's priority. Yeah, because I get all that done and I can get caught up with some of the other stuff.
We don't skip nothing that you know of. Okay, well, then I reckon what's coming up next is our. I can't, no, no appointments, so we'll go to our county's page.
That, and some regulations in the states as well. These are all key card. Oh, sorry. We have some loose ones that were brought in.
Sorry, you're done except for this.
Yeah, it's always, uh. I could, who I don't say. You want, I'll send the all seven numbers, but. We've been on reps from that all week. So just for future planning.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we've been exporting to you whole like no tomorrow.
I know, I know that. I've heard that.
Yeah, so. So that's a good thing from revenue expectancy. But I'll send you, uh, just, I'll send you guys, Luke, et cetera, my help to the decision processes with various. Try and predict where future revenues may come in from. So I'll send it as soon as I get home. Uh, the other one was, I, I, I go through the same thing with the vars HVAC units all the times. It seems like that. It's almost a scam. Every time, every time we settle on a new freon, that's no longer any good. I gotta get ready to get another freon. And I wonder if there isn't, um, and I was doing a little research, alternatives rather than replacing tired units, you know, use, uh, alternative approaches like retrofit an existing unit to take the newer freons. I'm not an expert on it. AI says, well, it depends and the rest of that. So and on the age of the unit, maybe you can use the newer freon, changing the orifices and a few other things where, you know, the appropriate, uh.
You know, I, I know our environment is very, very important, but you know that new tractor, I know it's an, it's immense with this, uh, it's got this donation stuff on it. It generally got fifty four irons and a loud head and a ton of it. Awesome. And that, it, it calls, it, it puts more fumes in the air to regenerate that thing than what it's actually saving because track, my, my old tractor's got two thousand irons on it. I've had it for twenty seven years. And this thing, I mean, it's not running coast to coast.
Well, I was just looking.
It's crazy.
Even the freon that we're accustomed to using right now is called the newest one. Um, what, what's the newest ones they're using? Um, R four ten A or R four fifty four B? Well, apparently, uh, four ten A is, uh, on its way out, so don't get a unit before ten A. Um, you know, boy, chances, it's every little bit of change that they change like every few years.
Yeah, refrigerator, it's big one at the ministry. It's a, they're using, um, just, uh, like a propane or it's the new type of thing as well. Propane gas in there that converts it to, uh, coal and heating. I don't, that's something new that I've never heard of.
You know, over a hundred years ago, we used to use ammonia for refrigeration as a refrigerant. Some organizations are going back to ammonia. They are, yeah. Now ammonia can kill you too.
Let's let you know if you are okay. If you're just in fast with her, yeah, she can't.
I'm good with that. She's going to be working on it.
And you may you.
I was awful quiet. Are you still with the ninja?
So Miss, I don't want to give you an interview. I address with the, uh, with the girl without us.
I'm not, I'm not quite there.
Please, I'll be in touch.
Yeah, and I'm, I'll send you that other stuff back top.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Only over an hour, that's nice.
That's one of the fastest we've had in a few years. So now we know who's bogged us up to spend.
Do I need to initial?
Oh, no.
No, I hadn't. I just handed them to you.
Did he need initial each one of these?
Just the bottom of the first page.
That's very, oh, oh, first page of each one.
Yeah, just money that's put together like that group right there.
Do you, uh, subscribe to the Hampshire Review and Grand County Press?
No, that was the ad for the deputies. It was over two thousand dollars. Did you run the ads at this time? And we got seven applications. And they probably were not from the ads. So I'm not probably going to run those again like that. Not seeing a result, but over two thousand dollars. And then Hampshire Review, Wharf Field Examiner, Great County Press and General Bailey News.
Well, the, the, uh, Great County Press, Petersburg don't have it. Did you know Petersburg don't have a law enforcement office?
That what?
Law enforcement officers, the city. They can't get them. They don't have no one. And the sheriff's department takes care of it. State police sheriff's department.
Isn't the city of Caesars, who cares if their budget goes to them, police officer?
Uh, not much, but I do get it, yes.
Well, that was like, that was two thousand dollars out of my advertising publication.
Yeah, that's.
I did not, you know, so I maybe, I maybe end up being over at the end of the year and I, I've been really. But we're trying to get as many candidates as possible.
Nobody wants to do it. Didn't have anything else, did you, sir?
Say again?
Did you have anything else that you wanted to bring up?
No, just keep my eye on you.
That's probably a good idea now. Probably a good idea.
And I mean, somebody's going to watch her.
Somebody's going to watch us.
That's what I intended.
But I just got home at like one o'clock this morning from KFC. And I, uh, failed to look at my calendar that was permission day. So of course it had a, yeah, morning meeting and then.
Got home at one o'clock.
Yeah.
That's when I started up last night crying.
Her name's Ali.
Ali?
And she was, um, having anxiety attack, felt, and she wants to come, but she's so afraid to come for Monday night. So she's forcing herself to walk down the alley to come and walk in the door. But she's just having anxiety attack. I just can't imagine being that scared for.
Too much though.
Are you? I didn't say her that, but, um, a little girl that comes to our Monday night.
She's afraid of him.
Yeah, but she wants to go.
Yeah, well, you don't know what the kid will keep doing.
Yeah, you don't.
You don't. She did. She's doing great. Thank you, Lauren.
I was just amazed that Joel could see her two blocks away. Uh, not two blocks, I'm exaggerating, but he can see her crying, but he showed me things up here. He can't see it, so.
I'm not saying one word to you all.
You can't even say behave yourself in a way somebody's picking on you. That's right. That's what our world has become. You know your love, Joel, and we pick on you. See, nobody does. We never got no advocates from the church. That is true, either of all these other clients.
I can't say for sure, but I think most of them got word of mouth through you all, so.
I knew three of the seven did. Actually, it was three of the five until it's like.
Or social media, but not going to.
After.
Yeah.
Said you were going to send that through a little bit. Thank you. Now I might get on the road early. You leaving today?
Yeah.
I will. There were two different, there were two different credits. There was the one invoice that had the fourteen eighty five, but there was another invoice that had four ninety five. But the only question of fourteen eighty five right now, but they gave us a credit of ten to pay. Yeah.
Or the way to her. Pressure contact and a little point or call back.
Yeah, they, they've been sued, I just know, but.
Why you so ready?
As soon as I didn't send people bills, I mean, it's kind of, yeah, because they gave us credit at the same time we were paying it too, and then we were paying the fourteen eighty five, but.
I'm considering how I am. We could add that to my, very well. It's, that's the position of that. Yeah, he, he happened, I think, my fault. I hope your loans will see big problems. So there's Patriot Torso or whatever, but so Morgantown has a P on all of their athletes. While they, they, and they'll be over there.
On there.
On all around, they haven't paid them. And.
You're done determining that money that way.
Uh, classes aren't to Joel, find him, ask him. If they, you know, all the athletes pay a piece.
Each person?
Well, I'm sure.
The athlete, probably.
That's everything. Yeah, that's something that they passed over then.
Interesting.
What else? Just want to put more on the citizen.
I think, I think that's a good idea. I, that is not that tall. We should generate some money. We should put, I think you're not talking about putting twenty thousand into there.
Straight up. I think that would be the only thing there would just.
No, no, we put one to, easily they would put it into the, we can put it into the ambulance authorities and they can, uh, this is going to the squads.
Right.
And I mean, it wouldn't be illegal to do that.
Yeah, I, that was the only thing that they kept stressing that it has to be on the ambulance.
Well, it would go, it automatically would go into the ambulance authority. But then they could, the ambulance authority should approve some of them to go, there are any of their money to go and they can replace it with that. Joey, is your drawing classes, they're done? Or I don't know, I was wondering about that the other day.
I never, uh, never made it. But I'll, I won't be here for the next meeting. I'll be, um, um, traveling back from Minnesota, Wisconsin. But I'll, I'll definitely zoom in.
Uh, have any interesting you got?
The county administrator over in Tucker's more than willing to come over here and talk to us about how their proceeds, what they do. And there's a percentage that you can put aside um, for administrative to help pay for, to help pay the legislature more.
Skills.
Calling through and making sure, there's a lot of work, I guess, going around to the, see how many tourism people getting in. Or how many covered students do you have, all that. But they said they're more than willing to come over here and meet with them.
What do you mean?
Sign all of their, they have. Just toss in.
Well, now there's another one in there. It's got.
But I think we should definitely have our overall check.
That's just, oh.
It's called, yeah, Paul the best. But, oh, man.
Yeah, that's what I'm counting.
Yeah. That would be, that would be worth looking into before we try to do another lab.
Did you, you look into the? I said, because I did, but it's a good deal.
Um, the other one, same.
You think the others is good?
Yeah. Big recognition.
Uh.
Yeah.
Dog food, dog food, dog food. Well, if you need, we missed.
Best friends that, this is almost a thousand dollars with the food and toys I supplied for the dog.
I'll, I'll do the area.
What was your? Best friends network where we're getting the grants. There's. I just mentioned that, well, I just mentioned this one. Is it grant or just donation?
A gift, a gift, yeah. I can get you the exact amount, but it's almost a thousand dollars.
I, um.
I, um.
Working with little vision, sometimes you'll just put a box in the trailer any time.
Yeah.
You still don't know what's something in there. And, uh, they had like ten dog beds. So I just took them on a closer, let's see there. I was thinking I wasn't going to be able to get on the road till about three or five.
Right.
One hundred nineteen dollars and sixty five cents.
I would have pulled that thought, let me grab my pen.
What?
Oh, her thought. Can you say what was that again?
Nine hundred nineteen dollars and sixty five cents.
Okay, and that was best.
Uh, it's through the best friends network.
They donated food and toys worth nine hundred nineteen dollars to the dog pound.
Yeah.
Lauren, let's go and show this one to.
Yeah.
You sound awesome. Do you want to improve it?
Um, we'll see everybody.
Anything else?
No, we're good if you're good. If you don't have anything. All right.
Jason?
I don't think so. Thanks for, um, bringing your son last night.
Oh, he doesn't want to miss that.
We enjoy having him.
Yeah, that's one thing he doesn't miss.
Yeah, we've been averaging twenty to thirty kids on Monday nights, so it's been good.
Can't be better than that.
Um, we have. But that's enough demanding right there, especially when you start going full sugar and that's.
And it's you, Joel, and.
And Tracy. And then Don Stevens comes in, he's up. He's seventy two, but he's up. And he can certainly get invited. He's just amazing man.
We'll get Peter to. Read, um, get part.
I'll be honest.
Don't, don't count on that one, though.
Okay, no, what am I? I'm not signing anything.
Look, today, I'm good, I'm good. We don't have to include that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm. You're doing, I didn't read whose fault this is. Uh, mobile home is personal property, not real estate. Oh, they put it on the wrong one. Well, why does it take people that long to sign their mistakes?
Well, we are a county of almost twenty eight thousand people.
Did you get the invoice for Royal Air for the, uh, for the heal?
The healing system.
Yeah, we don't see them. I've, I've just gotten it in an email.
Did you enter the stack that you gave me?
I don't recall.
I didn't see anything when we just signed.
And it'd be printed out here, I believe.
Come back to the minute approval, because we did the December eighteenth pending.
Yeah.
If we can also do the January's pending, and I can email those to you before the next meeting, because Luke does need those for the closing.
And I make a motion that we, uh, approve the January minutes pending.
Pending.
And then I'll say, you know.
You know, I'll email those and then upon approval, then we can add those to this one. Then I'll have left. And the next one's just February. Hopefully the ones he doesn't need is actually February because they keep going.
Okay, I don't know. Okay, I don't know. I leave it up to you.
You don't know, the thing about this mobile home is, is on personal property, so we're really not losing anything after I read that.
Yeah.
See, if they're over a year old, you don't.
Okay.
So, but then, then what do you do for as far as they're exonerated, they don't need to pay it if they don't approve it? They don't need to money back, okay? But I think we should, since it's on, we don't wanna dip it twice, and.
And then, yeah, I hear you on that, and, uh. The hard thing is, I know, the hard thing is, that's the hard thing for me.
Well, I have a great. Do you know, you know her?
Yeah.
She's been through a lot, yeah.
She's been through a lot.
We're going to do Minnesota, then Wisconsin. Um, be speaking in churches and stuff that sponsors the ministry and things, and then from there we're going to protect us. Someone's donating a bunch of stuff to the ministry.
No, I don't know.
Trailers back and, so it's could be a little, little trip, but my wife then will get to see her family and all that stuff, so.
That's a little small. And that's on that, is that on that piece of property on Patterson Street Road?
This is cut off road.
Cut off? That's his address.
Uh, District Ten.
That would, that's probably down at Burlington on that piece of property, started Silverado, came to. They put it on business system, he had nine, red flag then on tax, but, uh, that's Jill's fault there. So we're gonna have to exonerate it, that's her office's fault.
You think that's my state of entry, you're bound to ask something.
Oh, you go out here to him, yes, you're bound to. That's, uh, that I picked up too, uh, good idea.
I think once the courthouse stuff is done, this phase, and my meeting should be in the old.
Not many, not so.
True story.
There is always something.
I would, is there ever a meeting where we don't have to spend money?
Nope. You know, sometimes our honest to sit and wonder. But where does all the money come from with the way we spend it? You know that?
Yeah.
Um, the one person that was up there on the screen, um, guy, that's Diana Myers, that's who that was. You married to her and called it.
Oh, it's your sister, yeah, oh, okay, I can't remember, this, yeah, that's funny, it comes to names.
Members, the bill she was getting for the healing.
Is she thinking reconsidered? What's that, that you told me, is she reconsidering, thinking about? Remember what you told me?
Can't remember.
Later.
Okay.
I don't wanna beat you to it too, but, she's still there.
No, she's not on there now, well, no, she wanted to support me, she said, I just wanna get on, log on and see what you do.
See, you're really working.
Says she can hold, no, one of the people on there was my sister, um, and she was under die, but.
I would, I don't know if y'all heard me, I was trying to say it was me on there, I'm not striving here.
We did, we. All the, um, yeah, we didn't hear him, okay.
I was driving and trying to look like, I'm like, I can't do that, I just, whatever.
It was the unknown, okay, I see that one.
I hear a motion to approve all the, the paint deals, I'll put it that way.
Yeah, I make a motion.
And I'll second that, give me a second. Motion on honor is you'll get to the exoneration, I hear a list with all the exoneration, I, I make that motion. And, yeah, we don't have any states, Joel.
Or that other stat.
During the, oh, okay.
Right there.
First time, then the bottom.
Yeah, like just move one more piece of paper, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, here, took this one off, uh, okay, sorry, I'm like, we're, we're right there, but I haven't looked over there. Oh, and this is the states.
Jason, you made the motion on exoneration, right?
Yes, I'm sorry. This year, I don't know why we have to do this. For these. Nothing state does under independent land. It rained all day yesterday, it didn't rain, it's just enough where you couldn't get out of work history.
And this is the, uh, do you want that back on the December the eighteenth? For maybe if you want those back, you want that.
No, no, I just, you're copying this.
You want the location, you don't.
Sure, I'll keep it, yes.
We made copies for each of you, and then, because those are ones I did not get a chance to email, but I just finished them.
Okay, so I hear the motion to accept the estates. I make that, that motion, uh, approve that also, I would like to say, is that all we need?
I do believe.
I believe, I hear a motion that we sit around here during time, then we don't, you know.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, nice second, I have to.